Motion by Mary, second by Dave to approve the agenda. Favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried, invocation? Good evening.
Good evening. So we bow our heads. Father, would you thank you for this city council? We would ask simply that you would grant them wisdom and guidance in the decisions that they make for the citizens of Hutchinson and this community, both tonight and throughout the coming year. In the name of Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Next is the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Recognition of gifts, donations, and community service to the city. Does anybody have anything tonight? There we have a resolution under there and a proclamation. So the resolution is number 15399, resolution accepting $1,620 donation from the Hutchinson Lions Club for playground equipment at Lions Park West.
Yeah, this was the actual donation that we received at our last council meeting. So this is just a formal resolution to accept that.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to accept the donation. Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Pat to approve any other discussion. Fall in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Proclamation, we have one book, one community. Whereas the city of Hutchinson believes connecting citizens as individuals in a common purpose is a powerful means of building a stronger community. Whereas the city of Hutchinson believes strong community creates a stable and supportive society. Whereas the city of Hutchinson believes citizens of all age who feels a sense of belonging tend to lead happier and healthier lives. Whereas the city of Hutchinson recognizes one book, one community, choice of Christopher Ingram.
Ingram's.
If you live here, you'd be home by now. It spans a sense of community through a wide range of discussion. Now, for Gary Fortsier, Mayor of Hutchinson, Minnesota, do proclaim the month of January 2022 as One Book, One Community Month. And we do have Mary Hankey here from the lib-- well, retired from the library, right?
I'm still down there once a week. I volunteer, so I need my library fix at least once a week.
Mary, could you introduce yourself to everyone?
Pardon me?
Could you introduce yourself?
I will. I'm Mary Hankey. I serve on the Hutchinson Connects Committee, and one of the projects that that committee does is this One Book, One Community event each year. And so thanks for recognizing this program. This is the ninth year we've done it. We've had all kinds of different books, good success. Last year was a bit of a challenge with COVID. Usually we have in-person book discussions and then an in-person author visit. But with live streaming and working with HCVN, they helped us set up an arrangement where we-- Kate Johnson interviewed the author at his home, and then people were able to send in questions ahead of time. They registered. And one kind of side benefit that hadn't happened before is we had snowbirds, Hutch-- snowbirds that were in Texas and Arizona and Florida registering, and they could send in questions and they could watch it from home. So it wasn't all, you know, it was a bright spot for us. We never thought about that, and maybe we'll try and continue that in some way. But anyway, as the proclamation tells you that we're looking at this and how it started was, what ways can people that might not in our community ordinarily connect get together through a shared interest? And so across the United States, there's been, for years, there's been these like One-- One Book, One Minnesota, One Book, you know, different cities. And so we decided to do that, and it's been a good project. People that wouldn't be connecting with each other are. They're talking about things. I think I shared one year I was in the grocery line at Cashwise, and the person saw that I had a copy of the book in my cart. And she said, oh, she said, my husband hasn't read a book for years, but, you know, I picked that up and just left it laying around. And she said, that's the first book he's read. And we were talking about it. And so I thought, yes, that's exactly what we're looking for. But anyway, this year, the book we chose is different. Every year we try to, like, we've had mysteries, we've had biographies. The one link is that because we're using legacy funds, Minnesota legacy funds, it needs to have a Minnesota connection. And so the books have all either been set in Minnesota or written by Minnesota authors, some sort of connection like that. And then we've gotten really nice funding for these nine years to put that program on. And so this year, we chose a book that's Washington Post reporter's book that he wrote based on a study he did. His specialty for the Washington Post was to write stories that enlarged on data studies that different governments, that government agencies would do. And so he came across the study that, I can't remember the organization, but it was the United States Department. And he, it ranked the 3,000 counties in the United States from the ugliest to the most scenic. And with Red Lake County in northern Minnesota ranked as the ugliest place to live in the United States. So thank goodness Hutchinson will never have to worry about that. But anyway, so he was flooded with reaction emails, letters, phone calls from people in that county saying, you can't just look at numbers. You have to see what our community is like. We are, you know, so much better than just the ugliest county, you know, in the United States. And he said, it was all, Christopher said, it was all done very Minnesota nice, but very passionate, you know? He said he didn't hear anything much from the people or the counties that were ranked high, but boy, this, you know, being the 3,000 really struck a nerve. And so they invited him and actually kind of challenged him to come out and visit, you know? And so he was a little bit worried about that, didn't quite know what would be happening because this was remote, you know? He knew nothing about it. And anyway, he took them up on it. And what happened was he was just welcomed completely into the community. They showed him rivers that they kayak down. They showed him, you know, potlucks, they, every part of their community that they could. And, and so he was seeing a whole new way of life, you know, from his Washington DC residence. And he and his wife had been in Washington DC, had been struggling with trying to balance, balance, get a life, work balance. He, in order to find affordable housing, they had to live way out of town. That meant long commutes, most nights, his twin, during the work week, his twin sons, he wouldn't even see them because he would have to leave for like about a two-hour commute before they'd get up, and they were in bed long, you know, before he got home. Bottom line, and this is no spoiler alert, but he decides to move his family to Red Lake Falls in that county. And this is a book that just, it's funny, but it's candid and honest, you know? He has to learn about winter, but the whole community just welcomes him in, makes him a part of the community. His wife now is on the city council, you know? So, and he still works, you know, for the Washington Post or as a reporter because he can do that, you know, online. But anyway, it's a real interesting, funny book about, I think, things that we take for granted in a small town, you know, this smaller town, the space that we have, the communications, the connections. So anyway, I'm thinking people are going to enjoy it. Just want to thank you again for promoting this. We're funded by that legacy grant, the Friends of the Library, and the Thrivant gives us a grant. We also partner strongly with the Hutchinson Public Library. And then the leader and the Hutch Health. If you're interested in getting a book, the library has copies. You can get copies for purchase at the Center for the Arts or Village Shop or buy something online. So more information, call the library. That's probably the best place. I'm going to leave a copy of the book and some posters and little flyers with Melissa, who's always helped me get this out and about. So if you have a chance, read it. It's funny. He, he takes data and then just compares, you know, the two. And it's, it's a good read. But again, thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. There, a few years ago, I don't know when it was written, but Reader's Digest did a condensed thing of it, and it was a great, so I'm anxious to read it.
Yeah.
The article in Reader's Digest was pretty cool.
Right, right. And he got a lot of publicity from that a number of years ago. Had he already, I don't know if he had already moved to Red Lake Falls or not.
Had an article, yeah.
He had, okay.
It was pretty cool, so.
Yeah, so it's fun.
All right, thanks, Mary. Public comment, anybody who wants to address the council, please come forward. All righty, approval of minutes, we have the regular meeting minutes of December 14th, 2021, and the special meeting of December 21st, 2021.
Motion to approve, I'll second.
Motion by Pat, second by Chad to approve the minutes. Any other discussion? Fall in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Consent agenda will be done by one motion unless somebody pulls something off for discussion. A is approval of issuing temporary liquor license to the Hutchinson J.C.'s on January 29th, 2022 at today's end. B is approval of issuing short-term gambling license to the Crower Cutters on February 5th, 2022, at the McLeod County Fairgrounds. C is approval of issuing short-term gambling license to the Three M Club from March 14th through April 18th, 2022, at the Three M Club Building. D is approval of IWO DOMs for the 2022 Payment Management Program. Project Leading Number One, Project Number 22-01. And there's two resolutions underneath there. Resolution Number 15397, resolution declaring costs to be assessed in ordering preparation of proposed assessments. And Resolution Number 15398, resolution for hearing on proposed assessments. E is approval of Resolution Number 15400, resolution authorizing to execute a MPCA grant agreement under the FY 2022 Greater Minnesota Recycling and Composting Grant Program. F is approval of Resolution Number 15401, resolution approving memorandum for, of agreement between the state of Minnesota and local governments and authorizing for participation in national opiate settlements. G is approval of Resolution Number 15402, resolution appointing election judges for special elections being held on February 8th, 2022. H is approval of Resolution Number 15404, resolution to real estate of the city of Hutchinson Flexible Benefits Plan document effective January 1, 2021. And I is approval of contract renewal with Gavin Jensen, Stedna, and Mullen LTD. And J is a claims appropriation and contract payments. Anything you can pull off? Can I entertain a motion to approve the--
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Motion by Mary, second by Chad to approve the consent agenda. Discussion, fall in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. We do not have a public hearing, communications requests invitations. We have the splash pad update. Good evening, Lynn.
Good evening, May. Just cheer up. Sure is. Thank you. All right, make this a little bit bigger. Okay, so I have tonight a design update on the splash pad project. It was a want of the council to explore the addition of a splash pad into our PRCE park system. My city staff, along with the PRCE board and consultants HKGI, have been working through the design process for a splash pad. See here. So before we came to the conclusion that this was the site we were going to look at, which is the old Senex site down along the river, we looked at two different sites. The PRCE board, city staff, and HKGI looked at this site along with Oddfellow's Park as two potential sites for a splash pad. It was the consensus of the group to move forward and look at this site, the old Senex site along the river. And in looking at this site, there was a lot of potential for not only a splash pad, but also to phase out some other projects for the future for planning. So the want, the first phase would be the splash pad. So they put three design concepts together. So on the board, there's option one, two, and three. Option two was the consensus of the group that was liked the most, just to kind of show you what we looked at. Option one has a 2,500-foot splash pad in the middle of that site, keeping those big trees that are right on the site right now. Little bit smaller splash pad, and then some parking options, and then the box along the trail would be a shelter. Option two does have, again, some parking off the street, a little bit larger splash pad, which would be 3,500 square feet, and then a shelter as well incorporated into it. And then option three was a 5,500-square-foot splash pad, so a little bit bigger, larger than the other two options. And then this one does show a parking lot off farther to the left of the splash pad, giving some flex options for the grass. And then I think, once we go into the next slide, I'll show you kind of what the other two options or the other two spaces could be utilized for within this design plan for the whole site. But it was agreed upon that option two, the 3,500-square-foot splash pad, was the way that the board would want it to proceed. So for option two, again, it's the 3,500-square-foot splash pad, restrooms, picnic shelter, that's about 1,800 square foot. And then the parking lot would have approximately 22 stalls for this first phase of the parking lot, with the option to expand a parking lot for future use. But the first phase would only have that 22-stall parking lot. And then, let's see, you have just a picnic area under the trees. And then they did put some good images of what other splash pad examples look like for a 3,500-square-foot splash pad. That one's in Columbia Heights, just a picture to represent what it could look like. And then showing what a shelter could look like, a prefabricated picnic shelter that wouldn't need to have restrooms, and then would house the mechanical mechanisms of the splash pad. And then an element that we potentially could explore are the shade sails over the splash pad and the seating area, which are a common design element in splash pads as well. And that was an element that the PRCE board did like, so it's an option that we can add in to a splash pad. So a couple of the things that the board discussed was the options of the flow-through splash pad and a recirculation splash pad. And I'll show you the numbers later for the upcharge of what the recirculation splash pad costs. So there's a cost difference in the beginning for setup. The recirculation has some more mechanics behind it, some more upfront charges, but the long range of water conservation and water savings is greater with that type of splash pad. So the want of the PRCE board was to pursue the recirculation splash pad and making sure we're conserving water within the, within our programming of the splash pad. And again, we'll show you when we get to the budget aspect of it, what the difference in the upcharge for that recirculation model is. But we wanted to proceed planning for that recirculation, but looking at the numbers of what both options would be. Okay, so and then this, within the site plan, there's three different phases or elements that this site can potentially house in the future. Phase one would be the splash pad. Phase two would be a trailhead, and that trailhead was identified as a want of, from the Parks Rec Community and Master Plan, of something that we should also add into our park system. So this was another element that we thought was very fitting for this site and would tie in very nicely with the splash pad. So if you look in, to the right of the splash pad on the screen, this would be an option for a trailhead. And this would have an additional 14 stalls of parking. There would be a walkway that would connect the trailhead to the splash pad and then also to the loose line trail, and then some concrete seating areas, potential for expanding the art and sculpture walk, just different elements that we can tie into that splash pad area. And again, so if you look, number four at the bottom, is just another picture of an art and sculpture walk within the opportunity that that area would have for public art. Our Public Arts Commission is very active, and we have the art around town, so this would be another good spot to incorporate some more art sculptures into the park system. The trailhead would connect, again, with the splash pad and then provide additional parking for either splash pad users or for the trailhead users. And then also within the process, phase three came about too. So there's a couple of different options for phase three. So phase three would have this, the white area that's denoted there, could be a variety of things. It could be flex space for future programs, some green space, some fields, or it could be even a potential future building. This one depicted here has an option for a 24,000-square-foot single-story building and then a 12,000-square-foot double-story on top of it with some, you know, we're just thinking some potential good views of the river and things like that, if that's the route way down the road, phase three, if that's what we wanted to use this space for. Again, it would be flex space until that phase three was really thought out and decided what we want to use that space for. But again, it just shows what the future of this whole site could look like, and then adding additional parking stalls as well. So in the end, it would have 64 stalls in the main parking area and then 14 added with that trailhead space, along with some off or on-street parking as well, too. So main goal is obviously phase one within this project. So here's a more schematic design of what the splash pad could look like. Again, breaking it down a little bit more, the 3,500-square-foot splash pad with the reinforced concrete, some good trails along the side. There's an ornamental fence, which would be a good element to have with kids in the river and the trail, so that's built into that as well. The shade sails are depicted in the design, and then along with some concrete seat walls along, you can see them, along the sides of the splash pad. So those would be the seating that would be close to the splash pad for families to sit on, those concrete seat walls while they're enjoying the splash pad. And then just the trail that goes around, and then the box to the right is then a shelter that could be built up there to picnic shelter, which would, again, house the restrooms and then the mechanical systems for the splash pad. Here's another closer look of what it would look like. Again, showing no design features yet, just more of the schematic design of the overall splash pad, showing the 3,500-square-foot splash pad and then just the design elements along the way. Oh, thank you. Look at that, see? Got to make sure. There we go, right here. So these little areas right here would be these seat, concrete seat walls that I was talking about, and these would provide that seating for families. They wouldn't have to bring chairs or anything like that. They can sit right on those walls, and they also would serve as a buffer for those kids, too. I don't know if anyone's been to the Litchfield Splash Pad, but they have, they have big giant rocks, and then some of this concrete seat walls around the edges, too, just to provide that buffer for kids and then also seating for parents while they're using the splash pad. And then that fence that I was speaking about is right here as well, too, that would keep a little kind of that buffer, again, between the splash pad and the loose line trail with just trail users and bikers for those kids, kind of a safety feature for that piece. So any questions about the design so far? Okay, so now we get to the cost. So these are the initial estimates of the anticipated costs of the project. So it's the phase one and phase two. So phase one would be the splash pad, phase two would be the trailhead. They're depicted here in costs. We also did pull out, out of just the splash pad as a whole, the picnic shelter and restroom building, because that's a big element of, and big costs of this project as well, too. If you look, the splash pad itself is right there with the recirculation upcharge. So that would be the 3,500, not 3,500, sorry. 350,000, can't talk. And then 125,000, no, it's only 3,500. 350,000, and the upcharge for the recirculation is 125,000. So the splash pad itself, the price of it is right on point of kind of what our initial conversation on a splash pad. There's just all these other pieces that play into the overall design and all the mechanics, the concrete, the parking lot, all those things of the actual full-on splash pad design. Again, another one is this, this shade sails, which would be another design element, that's $50,000 as well, and then the seat walls, all those kind of things. So it really breaks down the cost of the overall project. And then another one is that picnic shelter and restrooms and mechanical piece. That came, those prices looked a little bit higher, too, than we had anticipated, but that's just the price of doing business right now and the way products are and things like that. So the, this price right here, these are prefabricated shelters, and we've looked at a couple of different designs of what they could be, but we wanted to get this in front of council again and see kind of the direction in which you want to go with this project as we pursue. And then phase two is also in, incorporated into the anticipated costs, coming at 220,000, 222,000 as well, for a total of phase one and two for 1,502,000.
And just for the councils, it's not a recommendation that we do phase one and two, but we just wanted to kind of lay out that, that site for everyone to kind of see. Yes, we have ideas for a splash pad, but if we look beyond just the splash pad, what that future site could look like, we wanted to be able to, to at least be able to present that to you as well. I think that's an important piece of looking at that site, and with that site being identified is that, okay, what's the intention then for the rest of the site? That's a plan we've come up with now, doesn't mean it can change in the future. And just to add to the recirculation upcharge, I think for the public to have a better understanding, there's really two methods. One, that as the water comes in, it simply goes down the drain and into the storm or into the sanitary sewer. And so as you can imagine, that's millions and millions of gallons. The recirculation really takes that used water and, as it says, recirculates and uses. And so long-term, it's going to be beneficial and, and even though we obviously don't pay for our own water, but there is a cost to that. But that does add to the piece, and I would say just our general philosophy of trying to be good stewards of the land, I think that was where the recommendation of the recirculation system came into play.
Is that what they have up in Litchfield? Do they have a recirc--
Yes, they have a recirculation system. And we've, staff have done research and reached out to some communities that have put in splash pads recently. And, you know, it's, it's kind of 50/50 on communities that put flow-through and recirculation systems in. If they're trying to save a little money on the upfront costs, they go through the flow-through. I spoke with Wilmer recently, and they did a flow-through back in 2019. And in conversations with their park and rec director there, they have some big regrets not spending the money to do the recirculation system, especially in a summer like we just had, where it was really, really warm and they used a lot of water. And when we were in the state of the, that brat, it was really hard for them to keep that water going, with a lot of backlash from the public. With a lot of backlash from the public.
How much, what's the difference, Lynn, between the recirculation and ju- price-wise installation?
Um installation is the same, it's just this upcharge right here. For the mechanics behind the recirculation. And um and I spoke to this the last time too, staffing wise, it doesn't really change anything operational. We have um three, well, we have two right now, we will have three certified pool operators here shortly. And so we have the staff um to be able to do the the required checks and things like that for it.
Maybe you said it and I missed it, but the the payback isn't that long either, isn't it like seven years or something? Where it's or five years where it's a wash?
Yeah, it was about five years, so um HKGI had shared some really good graphs and I can share those with you as well too, if you'd like to see them. Um some graphs of, you know, looking at what the the extra cost is to put the recirculation in right away. And then you're what, how long it takes for it to really make up for itself? And it was about five years and then it really paid for itself at that point. But I do have that information I can share too.
And I would note too, part of that is the mechanical piece of which you have to enclose too. So I think some of those costs, when you look at that picnic sh- that picnic shelter restroom building. Is included with en- enclosing those mechanical aspects of the facility.
I certainly think that's the way to go with the recirculation, it's just makes common sense. I mean, we want to do everything else that's green within our city.
Well, especially when, you know, last year we had water restrictions. Getting threatened on us, you know, so I mean, I think the recirculation is the way to do it.
Lynn, the only thing that I looked, when I looked at that and I thought twenty-two parking s- you know, spots. That's that's not a lot, is it, to start with?
Well, we talked about that at Parks Board. Like there, you can park all the way along the street as well. And also at JC Park, which is adjacent there, there's a ton of parking over there. And like Lynn and I have little kids and we've gone to the one in Litchfield and. Like I think twenty-two spots will get you home if there is on-street parking, you know, I mean. It doesn't seem like it's a lot, but it probably would, in our opinion, meet the needs.
And I do think you'll have a lot of trail users that come as well. They won't all drive, some will come by trail, they'll walk, they'll bike, they'll they, you know, come from the campground or the sanctuary. I mean, it's really in a good location where you'll have trail accessibility too for those users.
You know, I think one thing too that we didn't spend, I wouldn't spend a bunch of time talking about that I think really that we really liked this site. Was the open green space that would bring to it too. I mean, if you can imagine, um if you look to on the screen to the right or to the east of the splash pad. That whole area there is really open to where, whether it's a community festival, you want to put food trucks out there. To where I think we really saw this site in the future really being a multi-use site. Um that that really provides flexibility, not only for the splash pad, but all that green space that's in that area.
There's also a lot of green space under these big cottonwoods too, good areas for picnicking and getting in the shade and things like that too.
It's nice that there's trees down there, you know, there'll be shade for those that want to want to be in the shade.
You know, to be honest, I think when we first saw the prices, it was somewhat a sticker shock. Um but uh when we kind of looked at this, we didn't take into account parking. You know, we 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 didn't know where we were gonna end up going, we didn't take into account parking. Any landscaping, you know, I think some of those numbers could easily be um absorbed with city staff and some of those. Um some of those might be even a phase within the phase if you wanna if you wanna say. And I think there's opportunities for sponsorships too, whether it's the the shade sales. Or we know that there's organizations out there that are looking to make investments in the community.
Kroger Glass.
You know, we've had the luxury. We've had the luxury of really, I think every single one of our parks being sponsored by some sort of organization. Um maybe outside the Dock Park right now that I would say that even leads to opportunities to where if somebody's looking to make some additional investments. That that could help with some of these.
And we have um to speak to what Matt's saying, we've had some initial conversations with some interested partnerships that. We don't have a dollar amount or anything like that, but people are interested in the project and wanting to be a part of it somehow and sponsor it.
I like the idea of using up that space to the left as we're looking at it, you know, for a potential building that could feature. Even some music or something, you know what I mean, if it was open and it just looks like a really. I'm all for that for use of, I mean, just in addition to the city.
Yeah, I think it's, you know, just and I think we realize that, but just for the public to be acknowledged and for the council. Right now, we're focusing on the splash pad, but I think we thought it was important too that if this is the site we're going to pursue. That at least we paint a picture on what five, ten, fifteen years down the road, this whole site could potentially look like.
It's a perfect site. I mean, it really is. You know, it fits that area, the trails are all there, easy access in and out.
And that was another one of the design elements that uh the board really spoke to in HKGI too. About having that splash pad as close to the river and as close to the trail as possible for those good site views that you talked about. And um just being able to see it as they're along the trail or even people on the river and things like that too. So it's just a really overwhelmed good site for this.
So so what infrastructure, things would we have to do, water, sewer, power? Those are all on top of this?
All of those things would need to be um put into this.
They're all to the site.
Yeah.
So we wouldn't have to bring in a new water main or sewer main, it's just be the cost of the service line to connect to those. And then with, um obviously, you're gonna be looking at disturbing an acre, so you'd have to put in some storm sewer functions, but there's already some. Infrastructure in place to.
The flex space, that would be off to the west, would that become a taxable? If someone built on that?
Could be, possibly. It was talked about.
So there's the storm water built in there, if you can see too, along there.
You mean like a restaurant or something or?
Yeah, anything that would be solid structure that would uh.
Yeah, I mean.
I know it's not been on tax rolls for thirteen, fourteen years, but the thing of it is is that. Uh we could recoup some dollars off of a ta- off the tax base on that, that would.
Yeah, it was talked about at Parks Board, but at EDA, um sorry, the EDA has owned this for whatever thirteen years. And we haven't once had a restaurant even kick tires on the site. We've only had two like residential style developers kick tires on it. So but this changes the whole game though, you know, people would be attracted there because there's gonna be kids everywhere, so.
I think it opens up possibly, I mean, you know, in the long run, that'd be a decision, you know, that we would have to make if we have interest in in selling that. I think it opens up some additional possibilities um for that area. I think that's why we've left it as is, as kind of either an open space or a facility of some sort, so.
Have you uh had any or do you have any ideas to what the cost of operation per year is?
Uh but we don't have them specifically for this splash pad, but we have some numbers from the manufacturer and then from like Litchfield shared theirs with us. And um it was only twenty thousand dollars to operate for the year.
That includes your uh part or your uh qualified uh. Pool person?
Yeah, because it's not, once they're up and running, it's not a lot of maintenance from staff-wise, it's more just checks. Um it has to be checked twice a day, but along with our aquatic center, that has to be checked twice a day. So um it would just be an additional extra stop for them to do their checks morning and night or some sometime in the day again. Um but operationally, the chemicals and things like that, we already get them because of the pool. So that it will be a little bit more on top of our aquatic center, but we already bring them in for the aquatic center in large quantities. So we do save some money there, so there'll be an add-on. But we can get some more um solid operational costs of what it will be once we um start working with the manufacturer of the of the actual products. To see what we put in for design features and spray features and things like that, then they can give us more of an operational cost. Because that's all variable depending on how many spray features you have, um all those things, because then it's the chemicals built in with that. But staffing wise, it'll just be a couple of extra checks.
When you're asking, wouldn't be any anything unusual than what the pool is itself?
Nope. So tell.
We don't and and at this point, we don't have any intentions on staffing this. Uh there's there's some places that do staff their.
On and off for electrical, we have to probably some lighting.
So you put it on a timer, the splash will be on a timer and they will not run, you can set it for nine AM to nine PM or whatever the parameters you want to choose. And then um they run on a cycle of fifteen minutes and then if no one pushes a button, they turn off completely. And then you just go activate that button again and they turn back on. So it's not a constant um run-through of the water and the chemicals. So on a rainy day, it won't run at all as as long as no one pushes the button.
So Lynn, tell me, what's the capacity? I mean, how many children can you have there? Do you know that?
Um they, I can't exactly remember what they said for users for the thirty-five hundred square foot splash pad. Um but I can find out for you.
Both you and Chad, you know, go up to Litchfield, when you're up there, how many kids are?
On a nice hot day, there's a lot of kids there, I don't know what they they legally rate this baby for. But this one's slightly bigger than the Litchfield one and but like, we've been up at Litchfield, there's a lot of kids, but it's not that big of a deal.
But I, Mark would, I wouldn't say there'd be a capacity in an open space, is there? Like that?
I don't have an answer to that because I have seen signs at various facilities that say, you know, that's number of occupants.
Yeah.
There's an occupancy load, but it's not like a pool where there's, you know, four sides and it's filled with water. Because you could have on the actual like splash pad circles itself, there's an occupancy load, but then you have the whole park to spill into.
I'd say if you're getting wet, you're you're good.
And it's all per the features of it too, so.
I don't know that it's like a legal occupancy, I think it's more of like how many people can enjoy this at one time before everybody's on top of each other.
And I think there's a user per um the features too that we would choose based on the thirty-five hundred square foot splash pad. There's different features you can um you can have in your splash pad and then that'll make a difference on your user load too. Because there's like spray features and dump buckets and all those type of things, so that really makes a difference on your your number of users as well.
I think one of the reasons that, you know, I'd ask Lynn to bring this to the councils, because I think the the park board. Um Lynn and her staff and the consultants are really at that phase of. Um wanting to know, okay, are we going down the right path here? Because now we're gonna start engaging the public in regards to design features and and kind of get some feedback. We thought it'd be probably wise that to at least have the council look at this first before we started getting some, you know, feedback uh from the public. Just to make sure that, you know, is staff going down the right path with what we're looking at with the design?
Are you looking at like a night that we had for the pool out, you know, at the event center and have people come in and?
Yep, so.
At or?
Some next steps, um we're gonna gather, once you guys had seen the plan and decided if we're on the right track. We're gonna do some um community outreach and gather some feedback. Um it might be a combination of some stuff on social media, maybe the website. And then also, we've talked about on in-person, either at the rec center or the event center, somewhere bring people in where they can kind of um give their input. On what kind of features they want to see for the site, the fun things, the play things that they get to actually do. Um they'll get to kind of see what the different options are, explore them and vote on them and just they'll really start to gather some of that feedback through a workshop and a survey.
You know, um obviously, we worked with HKGI and a couple of different things, they did our Parks Master Plan. And if you may recall at that time, they had an online like social pinpoint where people were able to go on and provide comments and feedback. And so they do a really good job, I think, of that public outreach and.
Participation with that.
Yeah, we had really good participation with that.
Yeah, but for the pool on two, good participation with that.
Yeah.
There's a lot of different avenues, so if someone's not comfortable coming out to the rec center or whatever, they can do the online feedback as well too. There'll be lots of different options for people to participate.
How do you think it'll affect the pool participation?
I honestly don't think it will, um and especially when we had a summer week last summer and that was a record summer. Um it was very warm, we had limited rain days, but we're really reaching two different demographics, um splash pad versus the aquatic center. Splash pad, um it's free, it is really geared towards younger younger kids. Um older kids can still enjoy it and so can adults, but.
Dave, you can still enjoy it.
You can still enjoy it. But it really is geared toward those younger families that maybe they're not comfortable taking their kids into a deep water pool. Um because there's no lifeguards needed, it's there's no standing water. And then the aquatic center really does reach that demographic of the older population. You know, you're you're a little bit older kids who want to swim, who want to be in deep water, those type of things. Also, our aquatic center brings in people from, you know, we're not just, they're not, they're coming from all side of Hutchinson too. They're swimming from within our community, but people are coming here as well too, and the splash pad will do the same. Uh I talked to lots of Hutchinson residents that say they they pack up their family and they drive to Litchfield because they like that element of. They don't have to worry as much with um the standing water and those type of things. So it really is, they're two separate um aquatic amenities, similar in nature where you're still getting wet and you're having fun in water. But they really serve two different demographics.
I like the fact that it's a free amenity for children. And for parents who maybe can't afford to, for their kids to go to the pool.
Correct.
It's a good place to cool off, so.
Well, I think I think you're on the right path, so.
Yeah, so we're not looking for any action outside of if you guys saw something said, you guys are way off track here. Um there'll be opportunities obviously for more formal um decisions. I think our our hope is that probably what February, March, that we're bringing a package for you guys to consider to go out for bids on. Uh man, who knows with construction, you know, we've said we're not in in a hurry. And so depending on the bidding market is, I mean, I think we're looking at a summer construction, so it probably wouldn't be ready. But I think if we determine, you know, what we may be better off pushing this to the spring of twenty twenty-three because of prices. To where then you could have a full, you know, a an open in the summer of of twenty twenty-three. I think that's something as an option too that we'll continue to look at, so.
Well, I appreciate that you look down the road and give us the options, what all that site could look like.
So Brian and his crew are great, we'll play about the different options, we had really good discussion at Parks Board and. It was nice, because the Parks Board hasn't had any big projects since the master plan, so it was nice to have something big to talk about again, so. And Dave, to your question too, like the the splash pad and the aquatic center are completely different experiences for kids, even though they're both water. But I would say it's like, why do we have Elks and Rotary Park? You know, they're both killer regional, bigger parks, but they're very different play features and kids don't get tired. Like they might get sick if you go into the pool every day, but then like I would take my boys to the splash pad in Litchfield and it's a totally different deal. And then they want to go back to the pool, you know, but I don't think it will eat attendance if that's.
I can understand. You have the answer.
Yeah.
Anything else for Lynn?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh reading, we do not have any unfinished business under new business. We have first reading of ordinance number twenty-one dash eight twenty-eight. Ordinance amending section thirty-one point two-five of the Hutchinson City Code Library Board.
Uh Mr. Mayor Council, back in November, the mayor had led a discussion for the council. Um to plant the seed of possibly changing our ordinance that governs uh who can be on the library board. And as was explained at that time, it might um well, it would enlarge the pool of candidates that would be eligible to serve on that board. Uh especially in recognition that the library serves more than just the city of Hutchinson, but also the surrounding area. Uh because the board composition is set by an ordinance, we need to pass an ordinance to change the language of the composition. So before you tonight is the first reading of an ordinance that um would put in would put into effect. The mayor's idea of allowing at least one person on the board to not be from the city of Hutchinson.
So question for you, Mark, is down the bottom or down or it says library board. The library board is hereby established, board shall consist of seven members, at least five of whom shall be a resident. So we go switching from one to two outside the uh.
No, one of those two is a council member.
Right.
Oh, okay, all right, all right. Oh, I didn't read far.
That's all right.
I just saw the red.
Well, I'd make a motion to approve it.
I will second it.
Motion by Chad, second by Mary to approve the first reading. Any other discussion? Hold on, favor say aye.
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 Opposed, carried.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Uh, resolution number one-five-four-zero-three, resolution adopting two thousand twenty-two part-time seasonal temporary compensation plan.
Uh Mayor Council, this is a, an annual resolution that we bring forth. Uh we've got one that's for our regular um staff, another one that's for our part-time seasonal. Um the one in front of you right now is the part-time seasonal one, um and I would say this takes into account um the results of our, our, of our compensation study. Um some feedback that you guys have given us um as staff. Um but I would say there, this was probably a pretty significant change over what we had um a year ago and had had for the last several years. Um it's really kinda condensed um the, the, the various different levels and had a pretty significant increase in, in wages. Um I think we all acknowledged last year the struggles that we had, really along with everyone else. Um when it came to hiring part-time um and seasonal and temporary positions, and I would say this probably does a better job of bringing us closer to the local market when it comes to trying to recruit um some of those positions. It was tough getting a lot of data from other cities just because we've got a wide variety of positions and not every city's the same, but so I think there was a good combination of other data and then just looking at our, our local market data to come up with uh the proposed um pay scale for our part-time seasonal temporary um for next year. And so unless there's any specific questions, staff's recommendation is for approval of that uh, that schedule.
I would move that we approve resolution one-five-four-zero-three, adopting the part-time seasonal temporary compensation plan.
I will second it.
Motion by Pat, second by Chad to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, carried. Uh, resolution number one-five-three-eight-zero, resolution adopting two thousand twenty-two compensation plan, position classification, assignment table and pay grid.
Mayor Council, once again, this is another annual resolution that we do, basically establishing our, our pay scale for um next year. Mainly dealing with our, our full-time, um and then our um I guess temporary full-time position, our part-time, regular part-time positions here at the city. Um the fullest plan that's in front of you tonight for consideration takes into account the changes that were mech, that were recommended through our, our compensation study that was done this past year. Once again, that was a, an update from five years ago. Um so it does include a couple minor changes in regards to some of the, the positions. Um there's some additions and some deletions based off of just the, the structure of the city. Um I think obviously the, the biggest impact is the, the recommendation that came out for the, the seven percent change in the grid. Once again, that doesn't mean that every employee gets a seven percent uh performance increase. That simply says we need to move our grid. Our, so the earning potential, um seven percent, and that was the result of really two things. One, the study showing that um when it comes to our midpoint, which is the basis for our, our pay system, that we were four percent behind the market. And then the idea that um trends are showing the market that is looking to increase three percent in, in twenty twenty-two, and so that's where you get your seven percent. You know, the Wage Committee has met and did recommend um to the council they approve it, you know, a lot of the market data we showed um is actually right in line, I think with our seven percent, we had, we saw a lot of um anywhere from five and a half to I think seven and a half percent um when it comes to consumer price indices and even some of the increases that we've seen from the governor's salary cap, which I think went up about six percent and so um while it seems like a lot, I think it's in line with where the market's at and, and what's appropriate for for our staff. And so unless you had any specific um questions for you, we went through a lot of this about a month and a half ago. Um if you didn't have any questions, me to ask that you consider uh adopting the comp plan for next year, so.
I'll make a motion to adopt one-five-three-zero, adopting the twenty twenty-two compensation plan.
Second.
Motion by Mary, second by Dave, approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, carried. Uh, resolution number one-five-three-eight-six, resolution adopting twenty, twenty twenty-two fee schedule.
Yeah, Mayor, obviously along with the, the two previous actions and probably the next ten that are on the agenda, this, these are kind of our annual year-end um approvals, really preparing us for twenty twenty-two. And so attached for your consideration is the pro, proposed fee schedule for next year. Um changes to the fee schedule have been noted in red from the, the previous years. Um I think some of the probably more notable changes, we, we, we make some, we've made some adjustments um within our parking wreck department. Um I think some of that is obviously reflective of the increase in wages that we're doing. Um and then um along with that, no planning and zoning. Um and I think staff has done a good job of kinda looking at it and, and making the appropriate recommendation, recom- recommended changes just based off of uh the market and where we're at when it comes to, to our fees, you know. Some of these you'll look at and say, well, some things haven't been changed in ten, fifteen years. Most likely, those are things that are barely used. And there, we just don't see that, there's a significant need to, to increase those fees, so. Unless you have any specific questions that we can potentially answer, um staff would recommend approval of the fee schedule. I think one other thing to point out that you might notice was that you may recall in twenty twenty-one we cut a lot of our liquor licenses in half, um just because due to the pandemic. Um the new plan basically restores those to the pre-pandemic um fees, so.
Move to approve the fee schedule for twenty twenty-two. Resolution one-five-three-eight-six.
I'll second.
Motion by Pat, second by Mary to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Uh, resolution number one-five-three-nine-three, resolution adopting twenty twenty-two general fund budget.
Hey, good evening, Mayor, council members. Uh the budget in front of you tonight is the identical budget that Matt Yonick shared with you back at the Truth and Taxation Meeting. Um, let me just get it full screen here. So since Matt did a good job digging into the detail of the budgets just three weeks ago, my intention tonight is to keep this brief. Um however, if you wanna see more detail, I have it available here. Um and then after I'm done, uh I'd be willing to answer any questions you guys have. So with the general fund budget, we have a balanced budget for you tonight with a three-point-two percent tax levy increase to balance the budget. Our total revenues and expenditures are both increasing two percent from the two thousand and twenty-one budget. And as usual, on our expense side, the wages and benefits are the biggest driver. And those increased two-point-one percent, we're just a little bit under one-hundred-and-ninety-eight thousand. So with that said, I'll open it up to any questions you may have and ask that you approve the budget if there are no questions.
I'd make a motion to approve it. Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Pat to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, carried. Uh, we have resolution number one-five-three-nine-four. Resolution adopting the twenty twenty-two general fund and debit service final tax levies.
So the resolution in front of you tonight has a total tax levy requirement of seven million nine-hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand-eight-hundred-and-eight dollars. The general fund levy is increasing about three-point-two percent. And that's down slightly from what we had back in September for the preliminary levy, down about one-point-one percent. And then on the debt, the debt service levy, um that's, that's increasing six-point-seven percent from last year to a total of two million three-hundred-and-forty-eight-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty-two. And if you recall back in September, we had a preliminary levy of over sixteen percent or a levy increase for the debt component over sixteen percent. We brought that down uh since September to the six-point-seven percent. So overall, total tax levy, seven million nine-hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand-eight-hundred-and-eight dollars, which represents a four-point-two percent overall levy increase from twenty twenty-one. Um so with that said, I'll open up to any questions you may have and ask that you approve the tax levies if there are no questions.
I'll make a motion to approve the tax levy.
I will second them.
Motion by Mary, second by Chad. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, carried. Uh, we have the twenty twenty-two enterprise fund budgets. Can we do this by one motion, Matt?
Yep, and I think Andy's intention is to kinda go through all of them and.
Correct. Alright, um these budgets are the same that Matt presented back at the Truth and Taxation Meeting, with the exception of some minor adjustments to the capital expenditures within the water, wastewater and stormwater funds. We did some, uh, we had some updates to our twenty twenty-two roadway improvement project estimates, which affected some of our uh capital improvements within those public works enterprise funds, so. Um minor changes, nothing, nothing significant, uh but starting with the liquor fund. Our revenues are up nine percent while our expenditures are up eight-point-five percent. We're budgeting for a net loss of a hundred-and-fifty-eight dollars, which is basically a break-even budget. And that's after accounting for our depreciation and our transfer out to the general fund. And when it's all said and done, we expect a positive cash flow of a little over seventy thousand. Within the water fund, our revenues are up two-point-four percent while our expenditures are up three-point-six percent. Uh on the revenue side, our local sales tax revenue continues to outperform our expectations, so we bumped that up about seventy-five thousand. And then overall, we're budgeting for a net loss of one million seven-hundred-and-forty-three-thousand-eight-hundred-and-eighty-nine. That's after accounting for the depreciation and capital improvements. We do expect a negative cash flow of six-hundred-and-eleven thousand for the year. Uh as we use reserves towards those uh capital improvements. But despite that negative cash flow, we do expect a healthy cash balance at the end of the year. On the wastewater fund, our revenues went up point-eight percent while our expenditures went down sixteen-point-eight percent. Similar to the water fund in our revenues, we have that local sales tax uh revenue that we bumped up seventy-five thousand. Down in the expenditures, our debt service increased a little over a hundred-and-thirty-six thousand. And that's due to the new debt that we issued here in twenty twenty-one for the Headworks project. Capital outlay is significantly lower than what we had budgeted last year, and that's simply due to some um large projects that we had slated for twenty twenty-one, that Headworks project. And then also the Skata project. Uh we are budgeting for a net loss of one million three-hundred-and-seventy-four-thousand-eight-hundred-and-forty-five after accounting for depreciation and capital improvements. And we expect a negative cash flow of a hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand roughly for the year, but should continue to have a, a healthy cash balance by year end. Stormwater fund, revenues are up three-point-one percent while the expenditures are up three-point-six percent. The revenues include a three percent increase to our stormwater rates for, for the users, and this is the only rate increase within all of our enterprise funds. Budgeting for a net loss of seven-hundred-and-thirty-eight-thousand-ninety-eight dollars after accounting for depreciation and capital improvements. We expect a negative cash flow of just over four-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand as we use reserves towards those capital improvement projects. But again, despite the negative cash flow, we expect a healthy cash balance at year end. For the refuse fund, our revenues are up two-point-nine percent while our expenditures are up eighteen-point-seven percent. Capital outlay is higher than usual, capital outlay is higher than usual as we budget for the source separated process improvements at that facility. We did budget for that in twenty twenty-one as well, but due to some delays with the MPCA, we had to defer the project to hopefully twenty twenty-two. We're budgeting for a net loss of one million two-hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighty-two after accounting for our depreciation and, and capital outlays. And again, in this fund, a negative cash flow for the year of one million ninety-two thousand roughly. And again, despite that negative cash flow, we should have a healthy cash balance at year end within this fund. And finally, the compost fund, our revenues are up eighteen-point-two percent while our expenditures are up only one-point-three percent. Uh the big increase in revenues is due to the bitcon uh that's available now in twenty twenty-two for sale. Um our inventory was depleted after twenty twenty, so we had no bitcon for sale in twenty twenty-one, so hence the increase in our revenue. Uh we did increase the transfer to the general fund out of the compost fund by ten thousand. And we're budgeting for a net loss of two-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty-six after accounting for the depreciation and capital improvements. We do expect a pa, positive cash flow in this fund of just a little under a hundred-and-four thousand, and then again, a very healthy cash balance at year end. So overall, our enterprise funds are performing well and have healthy cash balances despite dealing with some large capital improvement projects over the last few years. User rates have been held flat, um other than in the stormwater fund where we've seen three percent annual increases. We have kept our other rates flat since I believe water and wastewater last increased in twenty eleven and refuse last increased about the same time.
Two thousand eight, two thousand.
Two thousand eight. Um so with that said, I'll open it up to any questions you may have. And if you have no questions, I ask that you approve the enterpr, enterprise fund budgets as presented.
And again, I can't motion to approve the resolutions one-five-three-eight-seven through one-five-three-nine-two representing the enterprise funds.
So. I will second that.
Motion by Dave, second by Chad to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Uh, we have resolution number one-five-three-nine-five, resolution adopting the twenty twenty-two HRA final tax levy.
So the HRA operations are funded in part by a special taxing district levy. And that levy is subject to restrictions set by state statute. The levy restriction for twenty twenty-two is two-hundred-and-twenty-seven-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixty-four. However, the HRA board is requesting a lower levy amount of two-hundred-and-eight thousand. And that levy amount represents a four percent increase from the twenty twenty-one levy. So with that said, unless there's any questions, I ask that you approve the HRA's twenty twenty-two levy at two thousand or two-hundred-and-eight-thousand dollars.
Motion to approve, resolution one-five-three-nine-five, adopting the twenty twenty-two HRA final tax levy.
Second.
Motion by Pat, second by Dave to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, carried. Uh, resolution number one-five-three-nine-six, resolution adopting the twenty twenty-two EDA final tax levy.
Okay, similar to the HRA, the EDA operations are also funded by a special taxing district. And the levy restriction for the EDA for twenty twenty-two is uh two-hundred-and-twenty-two-thousand-eight-hundred-and-seventeen. However, the board, the EDA board is requesting a lower levy amount of two-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty-four. That levy amount re, represents a nine percent increase from the twenty twenty-one levy. So if, if there's no questions, I ask that you approve the EDA's tax levy for twenty twenty-two at two-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty-four.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution one-five-three-nine-six, the EDA final tax levy.
Second.
Motion by Mary, second by Dave to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, carried. Uh, five-year capital improvement plan.
Alright, the capital improvement plan, um. it's required for one thing, um, as part of our bonding process. So we need to have a five-year capital plan, but it's also a useful tool internally for planning, um. It's, uh, serves as a forecast for our capital expenditures over the next five years. It's a, it's a very fluid document. It's updated on an annual basis with input from department directors, from the facility committee, the fleet committee, and resource allocation committee. Um, just by being on the plan, however, uh, does not give departments authorization for the projects. They still may, need to go through our formal city approval process, which many of those require city council approval. As you'll notice, in, in the plan, uh, the total for twenty twenty-two is higher than normal. And that's due to several large projects in the year, which includes finalizing the new police station. Um, some planned improvements at the civic arena, uh, for a new roof and HVAC system at, on the east rink. The new splash pad, as, as Lynn just talked about earlier tonight. And then also that source separated process improvement within the, in the refuse fund. So with that said, um, unless you have any questions, I ask that you approve the five-year capital improvement plan as presented.
Question I have, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Is in twenty twenty-four, you have senior dining at ninety-five, but in the other years, uh, there's nothing. Is there a reason for that?
I believe that might be some IT related stuff. Uh, let me. Whoops.
I see there's other things in the, other areas that have the same, nothing, uh, of category or dollars categorized. But I saw senior dining, I just was wondering if that.
Sorry, senior dining, we don't have a lot of capital items in there. Um, that's an agreement we have with Lutheran Social Services. And that, we more or less provide the space for them, which is at, um, the facility right.
Yeah, we have some minor roof improvements.
It's a small item, but I just was curious why that, uh.
Yeah, so I think that year we were trying to, uh, use some efficiencies with some other roof projects and, and get that one done there at the senior, senior dining as well.
Any other questions for? Entertain a motion then.
So I'd make a motion to approve it. Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Pat to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, carried.
Um, Mayor and Council, I think, you know, just even for the public's knowledge, um, you guys just went through a lot of money that you approved. And there obviously wasn't a lot of discussion, the public may just go, why is that? I think it's important to recognize this is really eight months worth of work. And, you know, I think we had five or six different public meetings or work sessions. So it wasn't like this is the first time you guys have seen these numbers, um, or anything. Um, and so that's, I think it's always just a good reminder for the public that it's, I don't know, maybe some of you just, this was the first time you looked at the numbers, but.
I, for myself, when I, you get the packets and being new to this and. So, uh, it came out, what, Thursday or whatever, two hundred and ninety-five pages. I recently had COVID and, and, uh, honestly, I do go through and read this. So I mean, that's why I sit up here and think, oh, people are wondering, you know, we don't ask any questions. But I go through this every month and it's, I think it's laid out well. And I think if they want to get to it, they sure can and, and our numbers are available for anyone to, you know, inquire. But a ton of work does go in and you presented it well, I think.
And I think it's just important, like I said, you guys, it, there's a lot of stuff behind the scenes that people don't probably see. And so I think it's always important, especially when you just went through fifteen minutes of approving, a lot of money that, this just to acknowledge that too. And the other thing too, and they get in the packet, but I know I sent it out separately. It was just kind of the narrative that I included in the budget message, which I've, I've done since I got here, just to kind of go through some of that. It was also, um.
We keep it down to two hundred pages next month.
Well, you know, I, I talk about those meetings where we had like eight-minute-long meetings and the packet was thirty pages. And I said, don't worry, there'll be, opportunities will be a lot longer, so.
After tonight, since you've approved everything, uh, we'll finalize our budget book. And we'll put that online on the city's website, um, email it to all your council members as well. And then probably ask you some questions after you've read it, but, um, there's a lot of detail in that budget.
Questions to make sure they've read it all. So that's a lot longer than, well, I don't know if it's longer than two hundred pages, but it's close to that.
It's close to two hundred pages, uh, because we put some policy.
The interesting part, I enjoy that.
No, there is a lot of detail in that budget. Hopefully that's useful for you. And then I know, as Matt mentioned, there is a lot more detail throughout the year that you see, especially some detailed financials. We show you guys a lot of summary financials up here. Um, but there is that detail we show you for the general fund that shows every line item that goes into our financial. Um, so yeah, a lot of detail that you guys go through each year. Eight-month process and we're done for this year. It'll just start in another four or five months now.
Lot of workshops.
So Pat, you should be thankful to all that in olden times, like twelve years ago, they used to print everything off before we got iPads. And the police department had to hand deliver them to you. And so we would have a three hundred page document delivered to your house and none of it was electronic, so this is a much smoother system.
Full disclosure, my first couple of meetings, I was printing the whole.
Yeah, and staff will always give you a paper copy too.
You've saved a lot of trees.
Alrighty, moving on.
Thank you, Andy.
We have, uh, minute board, uh, reports from committees, boards or commissions. We have the City of Hutchinson Financial Report and Investment Reports for November two thousand twenty-one. Pedestrian Bicycle Advisory Committee Minutes from December sixteenth, two thousand twenty, March seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one, and June sixteenth of two thousand twenty-one. And we have the Hutchinson Housing Redevelopment Authority Board Minutes from November sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Staff update, uh, Chief Griferson, you have anything for us tonight? Glad to see you here. Lynn, do you have anything else for us?
Boy, remember when you first, you never wanted to come up.
I'll keep it brief. So I just have a couple of updates. So our winter-spring brochure did come out, um, it looks like this. Um, it came out a couple of weeks ago, registration opened December thirteenth. There's lots of, um, new programs in there for people, um, the whole community, from kids to seniors. Um, lots of, lots of new programs that staff have been working really hard on. And then I just wanted to give an update on, um, the ice rink and warming shelter. Due to some un-seasonably warm temperatures, the ice conditions, um, kind of tanked a little bit. And staff are working really hard to get them back up and operational, um, so that the community can enjoy the ice rinks again. Um, so as of right now, they are closed along with the warming shelters, um, at the ice rinks until they can get the ice conditions to be safe again. So check back. Hopefully they're working really hard to get them backing up by the end of this week.
So that's Northwoods and.
Northwoods and Park. Yep. So they will not be open unless the ice rink is open. Kuanis is, um, open, the warming shelter for the sledding hill. So the hours of that, um, for the warming shelters, so Kuanis is open right now, but Park and Northwoods will not be until the rink's back open. Um, for non-school days and weekends, it's open one to eight P M. And then weekdays, three thirty to eight P M. Um, there are lights on site that are on a timer, so they'll be on as well. And then, um, once the ice rink is back to safe conditions, they will open up the warming shelter at Park and Northwoods again. Um, so check the Facebook page and the website for updates on that. And then, um, just to note, park shelter reservations will be available online. And, um, you can call in starting Monday, January third for the whole year of twenty twenty-two. And then, um, we will start taking campground reservations starting February seventh. Those are two big dates that people like to.
Now, last year, didn't we have our camp, it went pretty quick right away in February, right?
Yes, we had, I think it was like over twenty-two thousand in revenue that day for the campground. For res- we have reservations that first day, so they, they go really quick when we open up.
Did we get the vendor issue fixed with like the campground reservation? Where it's kind of confusing to use at all?
So when we changed over from Max Galaxy to Active Net, Max Galaxy there, like bread and butter was their shelter and campground reservation. So they had a really nice system for it. Active Net's working through some kinks there. There's more the rec facilities or not facilities, recreation programming side is really nice on Active Net. Their shelter and campground is not the greatest and user-friendly, but they're working on some updates. So we're hoping to have, um, some good updates coming here soon from them. But if you can't navigate the website, you can always call and staff would be happy to take reservations too.
Do you know if the county's using that same for their campgrounds? They're using the same program?
They had Max, they had Max Galaxy as well, but no, they went to a system called Perfect Mind. And I don't think, um, they're having great luck with that either.
Yeah, I found that one confusing as well.
Was it, was Max Galaxy bought out by Active Net? I can't remember what the, the thing was with that swish over.
Yeah, Active Net bought Max Galaxy, but when they bought them out, Max Galaxy had some copyrights. And then they had actually sold their campground reservation system to a different company like years ago. So Active Net did not incorporate their really nice campground shelter reservation system. So, but Active Net got all the bad things from Max Galaxy. It's getting better as people get acclimated to it and they get used to it. It's, it's becoming more user-friendly.
Can you throw out the number again for a reservation?
Yep, um, January third, so next Monday, would be, uh, park shelters. And then February seventh would be the campground reservations.
And full number for that?
You can call the Parks Rec community. Five eight seven, two nine seven five. Love mine, but you're better off calling.
It was a trick question.
Five eight seven, nine seven five.
Alright, thank you.
Give me a word on how the fundraising's going for the fireman's park at all?
I have not heard.
I haven't heard it, I haven't any updates either.
I told Schuman to be charismatic and wrap that baby up, so. See how he's doing.
Thank you.
Thanks. Andy, you have anything else?
Anything else?
How about Justin, he's.
This is Andy's favorite meeting. He loves being the star of the show.
My favorite is right now, I think.
He gave me props, because you could tell it's getting close to the end of the year for reviews and stuff too, so I always appreciate that, so.
Papers.
Mary.
Well, shovel your sidewalks, please. There's still people out walking and walking dogs and doing things out there and there's plenty of snow now. And there's ice on those sidewalks, so be careful out there. Everywhere you walk, parking lots, everything is slick, so be careful.
And if they're shoveling the sidewalks?
If you're shoveling your sidewalk, please, please shovel out that fire hydrant or the mayor gets a little tight. Have a happy, healthy new year. You know, let's all hope and pray that twenty twenty-two is, is a better year for everyone.
How many years in a row can we start saying this now?
Long time, too many.
No, just be safe out there. Mary's right, so. Pretty hazardous when it comes to parking lots, so.
Pat, what do you have for us?
You know, after listening to the, uh, skating rink update, I'm wondering, do they rent double blades? I haven't been on skates in.
That's why.
Just everybody have a good new year and, uh.
Absolutely.
That's it.
Yeah, Pat, I have a PVC, um, skating aid that I made for my sons, so you can borrow it if you want. Um, we might have to build some extensions, but it'll be good. Um, but otherwise I have nothing, nothing extra.
Matt?
Um, one quick reminder that city offices are closed this Friday, um, in observance of the New Year's holiday with that following Saturday. We recognize that on Friday. And then just kind of wanted to get some guidance. Um, so our February council meeting is February eighth, which is our special election night. And so we can have a meeting between the hours of six and eight P M. And so is there a desire to move that meeting up to four o'clock? Or to change the, the date of when that is, because then we'll have to formally take that action at our next council meeting, so.
Four o'clock.
Okay, so.
That's a consensus.
Yeah, well, that's what we'll look to do then for next meeting.
What is our reorganization meeting?
That will be at your first meeting in, um, January. So we don't do a, um, well, yeah, we'll have probably two reorganizations. Well, not, potentially two, depends on what happens with the election on February. But since there wasn't an election held in November, we usually just do it at our first meeting in January. If we had had an election in November, then it would have been the first Monday.
Special meeting, the first business day.
First business day of the.
So when is our next meeting?
So our next meeting is still gonna be January.
Fourteenth.
Is it the fourteenth?
Fourteenth.
January eleventh.
You don't need to go Fridays?
Yep, January eleventh.
Yep, eleventh.
That's it for me, so. Happy New Year, everyone.
I have nothing else.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Pat, second by Mary to adjourn. In favor? Opposed, carried.
From twelve sixty AM and ninety-six point five FM, KDUZ.